Okay, like welcome everybody here this morning and uh we just had to have a special meeting to to do some approval of some payments uh more than anything uh everything really bank put in her computer and printed off it somehow another got not just injected but uh delete delete that everything she had in her house so that's why we have a meeting today but before we get started and do one of kind of a tough meeting but before we get started just go ahead and then I'll leave a prayer and then we'll do the vigilance. Again my father again we thank you for another day of life again and dear Lord and just uh thank you for an opportunity to get together and discuss county business and just pray to just be business and help us to work together and move the county forward dear Lord again we just pray for the ones that are sick with this cold still going on dear Lord we just pray to just bless each family you know we think of the ones out west that's got uh just leveled in this awful tornado you know we just pray for each and every one of those families and just pray that we can help do a small part to to help them again we just thank you for for this day again remember Roy Darrell family and look over them and protect them as only you can and comfort them and again we never fail to give you praise in Jesus' name amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your beloved and which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay first order of business is a consideration approval to pay KCJA an amount of one ninety-five. This was for a training September mat somehow another of the bills is
They were sent to Mitch's email.
Yeah that's what it was they were sent to Matt they sent it to Mitch's email and uh we didn't know until they called and said that it had been paid so then we make a motion.
Motion second.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Ray Born?
Aye.
Ellis Changer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay we don't have it in our packet but man I see I see that Dirk just walked in but uh uh we got a letter from uh uh clerk circuit clerk building next door and I guess the time is expired on doing any kind of extensions or appeal and uh consideration approval to pay Charlotte Bailey in full for Bridge County case nineteen dash CM two seventy-four and KY Court appeals twenty twenty dash CA dash one one forty-one but I think what we need to do I think Matt and uh Dirk did you get together and come up with an exact amount and exact dollar y'all haven't got that together yet have you?
We have an exact salary.
We have a salary the only other things that are at issue are the retirement which
Yeah and that was
Thirty-five thousand dollars in July.
Yeah that's hard to figure out and did did you all figure that out or is that what they figured out?
They said Wisman said that she wanted the report from the state she's actually retirement department.
No she ordered it to be paid.
I know but like but she wanted the report for it to be paid from them.
Well we just found that
Do you have to submit that now and then start working with the state to get that done and that's a I understand that's a time process that not that's nobody's fault or anything else.
Since we started paying Charlie and doing the retirement long was that two months ago?
It should be beginning of September.
It it ought not be hard to figure out too that they have from time it was cut off to the time
On that value.
Did you read say their retirement in September okay.
Yeah yeah they got paid September and October and then I guess it's time this week is paying on November.
Yep.
But we do need exact
The only thing
We can't we can't only make a motion to go ahead and pay her full we need to have exact amount with
You can make a better back there right now.
Yeah you can make a motion on the salary.
So if you two can get together and get the number together and I didn't really and I know I know we got the money to do it but I mean we need to know exact it's hard to make a motion to pay pay this without and then turn around pay one amount it'd be the wrong amount or something.
I can't remember how many of them Charlotte got we got the same number.
So I think the best thing to do is let Dirk and Charlie and Matt
Sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is that a copy that you got from the state?
That's that's
That's a W two
Oh that's a sound
Twenty-nine thousand two hundred and
I think that's right.
But I think you need to get the salary together the the retirement I think is gonna be the biggest thing because it has to be to exact penny.
Yeah I think we have to get it reported out of state for that I said with the salary part.
Thank you just go ahead and get the numbers together.
Then we just call a meeting to go ahead and pay
We got a regular meeting coming up anyway.
If twenty-eight oh can you all get that together maybe my next is that next
Paying on state one I'm we we can get salary
Go ahead and pay her a salary today there is no reason not to do that.
Okay so you got the exact amount of the salary what you just read off?
That's
Have you got the number of that?
I did though I remember that you had a copy too
That's sixty I twenty-nine thousand two hundred is what you get when you pull a W two right now.
And then then also you're gonna have to take what been paid what you got her been paid
That was for twenty-six months that was up till September.
Have you taken that out of the amount that you just read off?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh yeah yeah. Because we read our report just in September but they are they will have to split up to shut that through paper and then it'll come back.
So you're saying
So you didn't get them paid since September.
Are you saying Dirk to go ahead and pay her salary?
Yep.
You all got the matching numbers?
Yep.
Give me the exact amount again let me write down.
Number I've got for twenty-six months on a basis of twenty-nine thousand two hundred is sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents for twenty-six months.
Say that again you get twenty-nine thousand two hundred and you lost me what is that for that much has never been paid?
That's my address annual salary.
Oh okay they're reading the salary so you come up with twenty-six months for how much?
Sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Are you saying fifty-three or sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three thousand two sixty-six sixty-seven.
Yep.
Are you sixty-six?
Twenty-nine hundred thousand.
Yeah I've taken so he started July one two thousand nineteen by the order so it's been so from July one two thousand nineteen to September one two thousand nineteen is twenty-six months.
That's fifty that fifty-six paper about fifty-seven.
Well I was actually counting my months so you're right there's there's more in there isn't there?
I've got fifty-six I've got fifty-six paperies.
Okay.
Times it's a thousand eighty-two twenty-three.
So what did you come up with?
Sixty thousand six hundred and four eighty-eight.
I think you need to get with Dirk
I thought it was sixty-one the last time I looked at it.
And get with Matt
Yeah I've known there's four really since he was looking at that I thought it was sixty-one something.
That's county attorney look his figures over and say exactly what what is old what is because we can't agree to pay you it's like we don't know what the exact figure is.
I I kinda I kinda agree I would like to see it in paper and uh have every month because if you're doing it by month you're gonna have someone you're gonna have five months in it.
Or five That's I mean this this doesn't take a lot of time give us five minutes recess and pull a report and we do it back and forth give us a recess.
I got I got no problem with that I mean uh I mean she needs to pay them if we can go ahead and pay her salary today and have that part over with.
What's wrong with that with that bridge at the door what you come up with five figure?
Well that's what we're saying we can do it in five minutes here.
When they release us in and y'all work that out are you all wanna work that out while we go ahead and
We can I think we can if Matt can come with us and do it if that's
We should go ahead and do the rest of the agenda items instead of taking this and then come back to the end.
Now say that again Brandon.
Once you go ahead and do the rest of the agenda items so I can look at it that way we can
Yeah because Matt actually need to be here on this second one down too so we go ahead and uh table that for now and then after a minute after we get our order done we go into recess and y'all can get because I I would like to see it on paper myself and and it written out and and uh cause one come up with sixty-three two twenty-two sixty-six the other got sixty thousand
Yeah last time I thought it was sixty-one so.
Charlotte's original claim was one hundred thirty-five thousand seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents on October eleventh we us three matches filed a motion to clarify the amount claimed but October eighteenth filed a motion to vacate the original judgment and I might say without any little deal of representation we did ourselves we was we was the only only three county officials that questioned this claim is that right or not?
And then even that number you got there Donnie that's probably not the exact figure
Well that's what I'm saying we start off with a wrong figure Judge Wisman's ruling uh the eighty-seven hundred and twenty-five dollars forty-two cents that was claiming that Charlotte claimed a trade incentive she denied.
She did.
Okay.
She did.
She also yeah Charlotte claimed twenty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars sixty-two cents for insurance which she denied reduced that figure to twenty-two hundred and twenty and thirty-one dollars seventy-nine cents that Charlotte proved that she was out of pocket.
If you'll read the order we've actually been ordered to reach a settlement about that.
I got it right here.
Okay and you'll see that Judge Wisman noted that if it could have been shown that Charlotte was due any more money for health insurance plans during that time that we should constructively try to reach a settlement on that.
Have you got receipts showing that?
Well I can show you that you all certainly got health insurance benefits during that time and she didn't.
Thank you question did you if you got receipts showing what she's actually out of pocket?
It's not about out of pocket expense it's about what she had was entitled to which is why if we have
Well we can't agree on what we hold and how we gonna prove what what you say you
Let's go ahead let's go ahead and we we uh we we do need any figure on paper and I think the best thing we're gonna be able to accomplish today is her salary
That's
And we let Dirk and and Matt and Brandon look at it after after this so let's just go ahead and go on with the next
If I could say so Judge if I could say so on uh September fourteenth Mr. Campbell filed contempt charges against us three matches but not agreeing to pay this one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars which Judge Wisman denied.
She did.
Yeah but I mean
She denied it on the basis that that you all did you all did choose to come into compliance as of September first which I appreciate it you all
Not the total amount.
No but you were attempting to come into compliance with the judgment and my and she she did not issue contempt on the basis that you made an effort to comply with the judgment which is fine.
Okay.
So she dropped
Again again we ain't gonna get we ain't gonna get anywhere with this and this thing we will get the other figures down on paper too but let's just go ahead and get the rest of the agenda taken care of and then we all go into recess and and see if we can get agreement on our salary paid so next on the agenda consideration approval to pay the flex bill and gravel bill uh you got your packet there that's for the block top that was put down in each district so I meant that that was some of the bills and bridges you put in and for someone on reading it just took everything completely off the system for some reason.
What about the gravel you ain't have that?
Uh it should be I didn't even look at my packet I have actually got a copy
It ain't nothing.
Did you get a copy of it last?
We just got this few minutes ago Judge and
Yeah well I did I did too so
Copy gravel bill
Let's see and I haven't even took time to look through it teaser I just got it a minute ago. You got the bill Matt for the gravel?
I actually grabbed more of the more of the flex bill.
Yeah you got it that's what I was gonna say can you can you print them off if you got it go ahead and do that we jump on down to the next thing uh we started doing that consideration approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash twelve pertaining to premium pay me and Matt been talking about this and I know we talked about giving each employee a thousand dollars and fix it where we could take their taxes out where they actually receive a four thousand and part-time workers will receive uh half of that amount five hundred but I was watching a thing where I guess it was Somerset they give each employee ten thousand dollars I think the state had uh I won't think of state but they were talking about that it was put on hold and it wasn't to do with that county it was another county that acted as a plot board so if we do do this before we make any checks out Matt would need to get with the federal and make sure if we get to even do this.
Well that's the thing they got twelve million dollars
Yeah they're asking out
Whoa twenty minutes
Twelve point six
There you go
Yeah they got twelve
Twelve okay who got twenty? Okay
We got
But we we're we're not we're not right close to that we may not have any
The population According to this judge told that our kind of well received is two point four
Yeah.
Million dollars.
We should have half of it already and
And I think uh this is a once in a lifetime opportunity to help people in the county like Denver for like broadband I mean broadband
Broadband waterline
Pretty waterline in the county uh I think we need to take a lot of consideration of what we do with this money like I said it's a once in a lifetime opportunity to help if I we can.
And and I would like to see it invested where it will help a lot of households versus uh well we don't have to worry about zero we don't have zero in the county but we got we got
One good thing I can throw out there is um I did some research on the broadband stuff and they actually the factory group and ATT actually have their own set their own pot of federal money they can get in and we can use this money in correlation with their money and do a match so if they say well we want to do a ten million dollar project in the county but we need ten percent down well we can go to them say we're gonna give you the million that you need to fund your ten billion and then we would get a ten billion dollar project and say we'll need
And I think that's how we need to look at it as a whole too I think we need to look down and up and I was on a meeting when we just blew down there and I don't know if y'all went in the same training that I went into but uh uh lost my friends by
You're just like
But this this is a it's an ongoing thing that can be at least don't have to be bent to twenty twenty-four
Yeah
And I think we need and I do think it's gonna start opening up where we can do a little bit more with it.
I think you can allocate it up to twenty-four but actually spending the money I think you got twenty-six is that right Matt?
Yeah you guys have you guys have a plan for employees
I have to get it
Yeah have to get it but I do go up to twenty twenty-six but that's what I'm saying I think I think this right here for employees is a is a is a plus and it critical time and uh they deserve they worked every I mean when that pandemic was going on I mean they never never missed and
I don't think they missed actually no time I think we paid them exhaust of the week ceremony
Well if they got
We didn't pay up without and he didn't come in but like that a lot of people work like you you guys did you all they work from home you know but they hadn't had good internet you know what I'm saying they a lot of people out in county that was
Ain't got that
Hops her job because we couldn't have uh central internet service to work
And and I really think and I really think we need to look at this broadband thing like doing a map we could probably pin a thousand and go a long way versus spending twenty and uh not covering more ground uh but uh so so do we do anyone is this an agreement everybody to go ahead and pay all employee full-time employees a thousand dollars and the ones that were part-time five hundred and let Matt just ever every employee that were they don't have to pay the taxes the taxes be included in this uh uh premium pay?
Now there is some if you look at the resolution they did right you have to put a copy there.
Yeah let me look at it.
All right I'll let you do that uh here's the thing there are some rules and situations that the state put forward if we do decide to do it and the main one that affects people is that you had to be employed during that time and you have to be currently employed so while I'm not you know a lot of our most of our full-time employees I think all of our full-time employees are still that way but I know some of the part-time employees have found new jobs and that's they can't they're not allowed to receive that money.
No because they're no longer employed
Right so the ones that were employed during that time if they're not employed now they just get kicked out but pretty much that's about I think all the two part-time workers well three part-time workers.
So what what's the total on the full-time and the part-time no
I think it's about it's about thirty thousand dollars thirty-two I can't remember Chris you remember we did matches sitting there
Should I went to
Is that thirty-two was it thirty-two thousand dollars?
I mean thirty I think it was thirty-five employees
Yeah
Time so one you got four time
So the social security match and all that?
Yeah
No The social security match will kick it up um about forty.
Yeah actually be that much money paid out then the taxes on top of that be be eighty-two each.
Yeah.
So I'll consider a motion to pay each and full-time employee a thousand dollars that worked during the uh when the covid was going on and five hundred dollars for we were part-time employees and I think it's twenty-five employees I'm not for sure but I mean thirty-five but I think it come to thirty-two thousand some dollars when it was a part-time and it broke down so do we have a motion? And that is making sure that is uh well we can't do it if it's not approved by the federal but we didn't send this in
The process
Get your blessing on it before we can
I don't think Christmas is gonna unless the state department's involved I don't think Christmas is a
I think it's a long job but but it could it could
Yeah it could but you know state reacts to things sometimes um but the process is if we approve the resolution today and then I got the paper Rich I got me all the paperwork I needed for the so I'll submit that resolution the title card backing it up and both in the ARPA panel DLG will have to look through it and then they'll then they have to kick it back to us and we have to reapprove it and write checks so I'm not thinking Christmas is doable but I mean like that surprise.
This kind of at least at least uh I mean that's something that we can do for all employees that uh work in the county and so do we have a motion to go ahead and approve this resolution so Matt can put all the paperwork together submit it to ARPA and DLG and then then we have to have another meeting on it so do it after they approve it. And give me this minute I need to take this comment. Hello?
I'm doing very bad very well
Right at thirty-five thirty-five. Um it's through the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA money uh they're labeling it premium pay and it's just making any employee uh available to receive extra compensation for the time they worked in the county. Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So y'all got two point four million?
I think it's two point four five six
But two point four did you two point four exactly?
Two four five three two two now.
Yeah five hundred.
It's just clear protection and electric vehicles are not equipped
Is that not Electric vehicles don't it's just yeah just some people
Our salaries are safe you're not being
Thank you. Sorry about that that was frank I didn't know who it was uh did anybody make an option to give employees that a lot? Okay is there somebody gonna think about or just someone to do anything right now? Okay no motions oh but you don't know consideration approval to pay G V mark for fueling an amount of three thousand four hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
Motion second.
Pay more?
Aye.
Ellis Changer?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Motion carries consideration approval of everybody eighty and that's uh in your packet there to draw three four and five and I think this is almost draw everything out.
After he does this or we couple up with James this guy's handling it now uh we've been in contact pretty regularly he said he was pretty much gonna close it out.
Well it's just I think it's only two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Yeah it's a couple hundred dollars
Motion second.
Was that you made motion right?
Yes sir.
Ellis Changer?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Pay more?
Aye.
Okay at this time uh we'll
How about you better back up on the B here grab a B on the flex bill.
Oh look at here go sorry they probably in there y'all gonna look at it and look through it that'll be broken down and you know
I like to look at the gravel
Yeah it's broken down here go y'all just y'all why don't why don't y'all look at that while they're while we're in recess and then we come back and and we'll have to we can do that while y'all do that while we're while they're uh so at this time uh consider a motion to go to recess should have a motion?
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy uh Ray Born?
Aye.
Ellis Changer?
Aye.
All right give us a little bit of time and we try to get to recess.
Motion second.
Okay we're getting a total on the gravel to put on the item number getting the item number four consideration approved paid Charlie in full on Bridge County case nineteen dash CL eleven dash two seventy-four Kentucky Court of Appeals twenty twenty days CA dash one forty-one but uh the settlement today that uh is gonna be paid is for the fifty-seven paid pay periods for Charlotte Bailey in the amount of sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eleven cents and uh like we was talking before we came back out of recess once Charlotte had been paid for uh the fifty-seven pages will actually be voided and all that active that amount is the link is here now.
Yeah um one thing if you do decide to vote this through I'll need not just consideration approval approval to pay it full but also do any transfers needed to get the money because it's not in there.
It's transferred from one place to the other.
I have to transfer that to general.
So the motion will be to pay Charlotte sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and also in this motion will be to uh give Matt to approval to transfer uh out of one account into the general account.
Don't you have a amount on the line out for that to just pay?
It ain't worth that it's worth the rest of the year.
It's got some in it.
Yeah
It's got a little and he has to pay the rest of the year's payroll with it.
What would you break it down to twelve eight is that what you gonna
That's up to you all I mean and then move it into that and
Well I figured if you break it down to twelve eight it's a five thousand one hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents.
We'd be having a full on that I think we need to go ahead and get
Sixty-one six eight seven eleven total.
I think we need to go and get this wiped off and that way we'll have to do the same thing on retirement stuff uh and we don't need to do this and have that hanging on when we try to come up with retirement
It's not gonna put a big burden on the county if you break it down.
I ain't gonna be putting burden on the county I mean we just gotta Transfer it down
He's got to say he had to transfer the money so
Yeah but you need to know for
Pull it from other places um I'm not real sure I don't think to I'm not real sure where I can come up with that out of one line. Um there is an amendment that we're in the process of doing that we gave to me but it ain't done.
What was that amendment to something?
The last one we did we did a first reading for when I would come back to DLG
Right.
But it's not that uh once it comes back we'll have to put it on a resume and then again and then we can do that um I can pull it from any other spot from now just nick and dive it and then put it back after we get them
I think we need to do that if you we need to go ahead and just get this one completely out of the way because uh then and then maybe that other transfer be there where we can do the retirement and
Borrow from Peter and take
Pay it out of one pocket and another
Can't do the fifty-one quarter Victor January
Start pay that's what I said if we have Charlotte to do it we can do it always up to us actually you said vote through what you wanna do but she hasn't accepted.
That's still not the right way to do it old man she's been waiting on this thing for two years when you were coming a year and a half ago Frank made a rule and we and we didn't know
Like I said the rule is the rule is not court law but it is what it is
But I mean what I'm saying we got it in we got it in we just have to transfer it out of different department and put it in and then we can get it over
Put it back.
Uh put it back and
It's a borrow from Peter take my back yeah.
That should become just in they really should have matched it that'll be a good problem.
Yeah it's probably mailed they always mail it back they don't scan and see and they mail.
But the motion that I want to consider approval is to pay Charlotte in full amount sixty-one six eighty-seven eleven and give Matt to approve to transfer out of different funds into the general fund and then when we get to pay it back to we can go and put it all back in and we do have to do that with just know there's options.
You can do, I can't get legal soft coming up. I just brought the cap here, she brought the cap.
Yeah, I can do that.
Who you want to pay home?
Always keep your first term. Okay, does anybody gonna make a motion to go in and pay Charlotte her full amount of your salary and give Matt to approval to transfer and lay it in general funds and then when we get her other payback, play it back over and back in the general. And like I said, Jada, we just have to transfer from one department to the next.
Place where Burger County paid off that, that bill or that?
Not even burden the county, it's in there.
Sixty-one thousand dollars, not on thirty.
Yeah, we actually got two hundred and something, sixteen of one-time graduates, I think we do have road department, but I don't, we only two thousand, I think.
She gets paid, she gets paid.
And then we're getting ready to get another gravel occupation tax coming in, uh, that'll be, uh, around two fifty, two eighty. The money's there and the finances is there, just have to transfer it out of different accounts. And they don't need to start, wanna do payment on this, then when, uh, we far went and all that coming in, I mean, we wanna pay back again. But like I say, I mean, when you was been coming for eighteen months.
I make a motion pair, it was a pay of fifty-one, forty, fifty-nine.
You can't do that.
I'm not.
We've been, that was the whole reason we went to court, because if you remember, we had a year, and I did take that in Charlotte.
You not want to accept this?
I, Donnie, I'm, I'm Charlotte's lawyer, I work for Charlotte, Charlotte's here, we can ask her, pull on that.
Here, they don't need to start doing that, Donnie, make it pay. Well, well, God, if we didn't have it, it'd be just.
Just looking after taxpayers, y'all.
How?
Look after, or the county has to pay this.
Looking after the county's what?
But the people has to pay this, Jeff, we don't have to pay it, you don't have to pay it, but taxpayers do.
Yeah, I mean, all of them has to pay it, but I mean, we knew it was coming for eighteen months. And.
Well, we, we, we.
And I want the finances and we got, we got the finances in there, just have to transfer.
That's as well.
And different.
Five hundred and something.
You create this way.
Okay, uh, Charlotte did pay the full amount there, Donnie is wanting to make a motion if you will, to accept, what was the amount exactly, five thousand?
Fifty-one, forty, fifty-nine for a month, twelve months to pay.
Donnie, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for two years, I'd like to have a sixty-one thousand for the salary part right now.
She'd like to give to Charlotte, like I said, it's gonna put her county in a, in a disfavor.
Now wait a minute, Donnie.
How, how you gonna?
Pass it on this way.
I'm not here to argue.
I hope you got in it.
I'm not here to argue.
Have you looked at the balance?
I definitely didn't want to.
So have you looked at the balance?
It's gonna cause a problem, some of the line items right now, it is.
Well, you definitely.
Yeah, it's gonna cause a problem, I mean, as long as no big deals come in, then we're okay, if something big was coming in, some of the line items is gonna hurt us, but, I mean.
Going to say that there's overall monies there, it's just a matter of.
It's also spread out, right, it's just gonna be a lot more.
And they're, they're wanting enough money to pay that, I was just, what, uh.
What we?
You don't know what we've got.
God forbid, but what we have is a disaster, not, not pay bills, just, yeah, I mean, we don't even know, if we strap ourselves here, we will put a six thousand there.
We, we had ten thousand, we got, we got, we'll take that.
That's what I hate to also. Here's my, here's my number.
For three months.
Wow, that's the total?
Eighty-eight, fifty-four, one point.
Okay, the motion that, that I got up for vote is, uh, pay Charlotte the full amount of sixty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars eleven cents.
Nobody's.
And it was mapped approval to do transfer, do we have a motion? I guess we ain't gonna pay it, I guess the next thing to do is go to court and I guess, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know why y'all wanna go back over there, I mean, you've been dozen times, you know it's coming for eighteen months.
Make a motion, pay fifty-one, forty, fifty-nine.
Okay, there are already motion, there are already motion up the road. Are you gonna, have we got a motion or second, or is it gonna die?
Charlotte, if this passes, what are you gonna tell me to do?
Do what?
If this passes, the way Donnie's proposing, it did five thousand a month in parts, are you gonna tell me to go back over there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm reckoning, you wanna, you wanna.
Okay, so no motion being made, Donnie?
Absolutely, Donnie.
So chokes?
I know.
Okay, so now the motion is that Donnie is making motion to pay fifty-one, forty-nine, how many cents?
Fifty-nine. Fifty-one, forty, fifty-nine, twelve months payment. Just gross pays pay.
That's Donnie's motion, it may go make a motion on that.
I make that mo, I second that motion.
You made motion.
I did, but you said Donnie did, I don't.
Still need to add up to that, need to win transfers.
I don't think you have to burn that, I think she's gonna take it.
But we got a.
Donnie Bush.
Open a second on the board, you do it.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Hills teenager?
Uh.
Uh, motion, Gary, so dirt, whatever you in Charlotte, need to do to get your money, uh, be left to you. Next thing is a motion to pay the flex bill and gravel bill, the flex bill is, uh, five hundred thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. And the gravel for three months is eight thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars twenty-eight cents. Do we have a motion to pay those bills?
My previous game, Judge.
Five hundred thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars.
On flex?
And ninety-three cents, yeah, on flex. And then a toll for a hickel on gravel for September, October, November is eight thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
But we, we're getting, for the record, we're getting reimbursed for flex, for flex to the state.
Yeah.
How was it?
That's the breakdown, if you want to come.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion, second.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Hills teenager?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Motion, Gary. Motion to adjourn meeting.
Motion, second.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Right.
Before you adjourn, I have a question.
To say that, yeah.
Before you adjourn, Matt, I have a moment privilege to ask a question.
Hmm, you just pretending to short it?
Little bit.
Okay.
The motion that was made was about the financial distress of the county, that sixty-one thousand dollars we put it in. Counties made a lot of cuts by school severance, I get it, we're pennies of where we were ten years ago, it's harder on county. But the county's asked to sacrifice a lot as it is, that for four years, we still haven't had a road form, e- ever, but we got a road department that does its best. There are things that the law says the people of this county are entitled to. Now, I don't live here, I got a lot of family that does, I care about this place, we fought a lot. But I think you are in, acting good faith in those ways, though we disagree. If the county's gonna be there in that much distress over that much money, when, when they're already sacrificing so much, government costs money and to deliver costs money, I don't know what to tell you what to do, but that doesn't bode well for a lot of people here, including you all, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, uh, motion been made to adjourn and Donnie was aye and Ray was aye, Hills teenager?
Uh.
Motion, Gary.